Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to organize and state the pledge with us, please. I roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Alderman Mills.
Alderman Milner.
Alderman Milner.
Alderman Milner.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Present.
Gotcha. Alderman Zaring.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Present.
Mayor Bowman. President, thank you. We do have a quorum. Well, in light of the weather forecast and those tornadoes that surrounded us, we've made a few modifications to our evening. We will not be having a live work session. We'll be moving that to our next regular meeting. And we have some staff here with us in City Hall and other staff who are on the Zoom meetings. So I want to thank our staff for their flexibility and their quick thinking to make some last-minute modifications. But that being said, we're going to go ahead and begin our meeting. We don't have any ceremonial matters this evening. That was one of the things that we decided to postpone, the recognition for the Electric Department for their mutual aid to the city of Hannibal, Missouri. So that'll be on our next meeting. For public participation, my understanding is we had some agenda request forms. I believe Sarah Corn... Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes.
And is there someone in the room with you? Were you able to make contact with Peggy and Kim?
Yes, I have Peg Wyatt with me.
Okay, thank you. So we have Peg Wyatt and Sarah Cornelles in the Zoom room, and they want to speak to... They submitted the agenda request forms, and they want to speak to the closing of the alleyway. So I want to give you the parameters for your public participation. You're allowed to speak for three minutes, and City Administrator Ratliff will be the timekeeper. And if you're not finished in three minutes, and you want to continue with a majority of the board voting approval, you may continue for another three minutes. So is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Wyatt, you have the floor. You may go ahead and address the board.
Thank you very much, Judy. I appreciate that. The reason that I'm here is I'm speaking on behalf of Kim and Sarah and myself, and we oppose the closing of the alley. And the reason we oppose the closing of the alley is because we got information on it, and we saw the form that was going to be built there, and they're saying they're putting six houses on a piece of property that at the time I moved here was only had two houses on it. And back in 2002, or 2000, when I tried to get the city to let me add a 16-by-20-foot room onto my house, they objected to it and wouldn't let me. So I don't see how you can change a two-part lot to a six dwellings on a property. And that's why we're opposing it, because that will degrade our property and change our valuation. That's all I have to say at this point.
Is there anyone on the staff that wants to respond to Ms. Wyatt? Mr. Crowe's in the room. Mr. Ratliff, Mr. Crowe?
Crowe Planning. I'll just briefly give my staff report for when we get to that item on the agenda. What the request is to vacate about 166 feet of an east-west mid-block alley between Shady Lane and Chestnut. It starts at Lexington and goes east 166 feet to the back lots of the lots that front onto Lexington. The applicants are with us in the meeting on Zoom, Chris Giadini and Brett Hasty. They have applied for a plat approved for approval of a replat that will come before the Planning Commission at the April Planning Commission meeting and then come to the board at the first meeting in May. What they will be proposing, or what they are proposing, is six homes to go on there. We will be evaluating it, making a recommendation. But with this, what they are requesting, the vacation of the alley, this is similar to when Lawrence Smith vacated an alley on, I think Bradley and Forest Streets, to vacate an alley and then he came back with a minor plat. They're asking at this time to vacate the alley so that they can submit the plat with that land, a part of the development. We staff reviewed this. We see no reason for the right-of-way to... for that alley to remain as right-of-way, whether it's this project that's going to come to you in a month or another project in the future. There's a ditch or gully, pretty significant one, that runs north-south, just to the east. We don't see that alley ever being developed into an alley that residents would use. So again, whether it's for this project or one in the future, we recommend vacation of the alley. And it would be subject to, as usual, our alleys are vacated, subject to us retaining an easement for utilities. Now, I will say, once we get the plat, the easement will probably be relocated. But for now, we're following the normal procedure of retaining an easement for utilities. Be happy to answer any questions now or later on.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt, do you have any further comments? Or Kim, do you... Shalufa?
Kim's not here tonight, hon. She had a family emergency, and she couldn't make it.
Okay. What about Sarah? Any further comments for the board?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. We just want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to speak. And I believe Mr. Crowe has another comment.
Yeah. I promised Sarah that I would add something. We had talked early on, and her primary concern at that time was that... had asked me if these were going to be rentals because they much preferred owner-occupied houses. She and Mr. Giadini, one of the applicants, talked, and he advised her what he advised me, which was these are going to be for sale by owners. They're not retaining them as rentals. I had thought that that satisfied her concerns, and she was the one I was referring to in the staff report when I said I had met with one of the neighbors and thought that their concern had been taken care of. But Sarah, after she saw the staff report, she says, Roger, I still have concerns, and they have mentioned them in Peg's comments.
If there are no further comments, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The first is the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen, March the 1st. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second? I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The minutes of the work session, March 1st. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Those minutes will also stand approved as read. I'm going to remove... No, I'm sorry. The Board of Aldermen Special Meeting, March the 11th. That was the meeting that we had about electric rates and our electric bill. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. I'm removing the executive session minutes from the agenda tonight since everyone is not here meeting in person. And moving on to the agenda items, the first...
Council Bill 18.
18, thank you.
Pardon. Council Bill 18, a resolution of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville authorizing city administrator to update authorized banking signatures at Community Bank and Commerce Bank and establishing an effective date.
Jeremy, I think this is you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. You should see in front of you updated documentation for removing a former employee from the banking signatures at both Community Bank of Raymore and the Commerce Bank and updating that with the new employee that took their place. This is pretty standard practice. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions of the board for Mr. Smith? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second? I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Reese. A roll call, please.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 18 is approved and becomes Resolution R 011. Council Bill 19?
A resolution of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville authorizing the city administrator to refund and overcharge of electric usage to the various business owners at 1901 East Mechanic Street in an amount not to exceed $36,372.40 in accordance with Code Section 700.385 and establishing an effective date.
So, good evening, Board. So this one is a little more complicated. In the staff report, I lay out the reasons that... or the defining factors that led to the overcharge, ultimately citing the ordinance which allows us for the overcharge going back up to a period of 16 months. We're dealing with a period of 40 months in which case the power multiplier for this utility customer was incorrectly charged, and then the subsequent discovery of this overcharge, the correction of that factor, and then the calculation of the amount that is owed back to the customer site. And so we're working with the two known owners to provide them back with the credit. The money is too big of a dollar figure to credit back to the account. Then we'd be carrying a credit over multiple years on the current owner as well. So I would entertain any questions.
Jeremy, will this come out of the... What accounts does this come out of? Electric or general funds?
This would have been an electric revenue, and so it will be charged back to the electric fund.
Thank you.
Maybe I missed it. Sorry. Maybe I missed it, but how do you propose that we're going to pay this back? When I say how, in a number of payments, one payment or how?
We will pay this back in one lump sum to each of the business owners based on the amount of months that they have... they owned the property during the period of time for which they were charged.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
I'm sorry. Maybe I don't understand this. Are they getting back what they were overcharged?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's... Thank you.
Yeah, there's a very complicated, convoluted calculation, which we did not include in here, which basically we went back and recalculated every month of bill for the overcharge, found the accurate charge per month, deducted that from what they actually paid, and that's the amount that they're going to be refunded, including all the... I mean, including tax, including all of the things that would have went into that bill.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from anyone else on the board? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Mills with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 19 is approved and becomes Resolution R 012. Council Bill 20?
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately 4.63 acres of adjacent territory owned by Baldev, Kara, and the Kara Family Wealth Trust located at 21400 East 275th Street into the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, the only thing I would add is that we received the petition. The Karras, who are the owners of the Slumber Inn, wish to connect to the sewer once it's constructed. Of course, as you know, it's now under design. Representing the Kara family is Harry Kara. His father, Baldev, was the petition signer in behalf of the Kara Family Wealth Trust, and we recommend approval. And again, Mr.... or Harry is online if he'd like to make a comment or two.
Mr. Kara, you're welcome to make a comment to the board if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. On behalf of the Kara family, I'd like to thank the city of Harrisonville for providing us with this opportunity. We look forward to working with the city of Harrisonville and continuing to be residents of the community. Thank you.
Well, you have a very nice facility out there. We welcome you into the city limits. Board, this is an ordinance, so I would entertain a motion.
Second?
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman, is your motion to suspend the rule on this? Alderman Dorhoff?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Zaring to suspend the rule on Council Bill 20 and advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading, please.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately 4.63 acres of adjacent territory owned by Baldev, Kara, and the Kara Family Wealth Trust located at 21400 East 275th Street into the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 20 becomes Ordinance 3535. Council Bill 21?
An ordinance vacating unimproved east-west alley right-of-way extending 165 feet east of Lexington Road between Shady Lane and Chestnut Drive in Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Crowe?
Mayor, the only thing that I would add is the applicants are with us via Zoom. Perhaps they would like to make some comments. Again, we're recommending approval because this alley has never been improved. We do not believe that there will ever be a need for it for transportation purposes, and so we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Mr. Giadini, would you care to address the board?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak tonight. I just want to say a very... a few quick things. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda. Secondly, my partner and I are here, and we're very excited about the project that we're going to be bringing to the city next month. It's been years in the making, and we look forward to engaging with you and the neighbors to share all the information that we have on our project and to show you that it's going to be a huge asset for the city. With that, take any questions if there are any.
Questions of the board for Mr. Giadini?
Chris, I got a couple of questions. Pardon me. Originally, how many lots were there?
Three lots were platted, which is what we're purchasing from Ken and Brenda Spear.
So then you'll just split those each in half, basically, and pick up the extra alleyway footage and then double the housing that would have gone in?
There's a lot there, so I'll try to answer it the best that I can and to your satisfaction. So all three lots currently front Lexington. The way we're going to replat it, according to the city's subdivision regulations, we're going to plat it into six lots. Each of those six lots will be greater than the minimum required lot area in the city's regulations, and we will construct one home on each lot, and all of those homes will be owner-occupied. Either me or my partner will own those homes to rent them out.
Okay. I thought earlier Roger said that they would not be rentals, that they would be owner-occupied.
That's correct. We're not going to own them. We're not going to rent them out. We're going to sell them for owner-occupants.
Okay. I thought you just said you would own them and they'd be rented out. That's why I was double-checking just to make...
No, ma'am. No. We're not property managers. We don't intend to do that.
Chris, does your partner Brent have any comments for the board? I see he's on the Zoom.
He might, so I'll mute myself.
Okay, thank you. Brent, do you want to address the board about your project?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
So, you know, our primary objective is to try and manufacture some affordable housing and make it available for either new or existing Harrisonville residents. You know, as well as bring, you know, a fresh look to, you know, near the downtown area. And I know Roger's got some preliminary sketches that we've come up with. I've done a similar project in another city that's gone very well, and contrary to Ms. Cornel's idea that it might decrease her valuation, it would actually be quite the contrary. It would raise the property value throughout the Lexington and Chestnut area. So Chris and I would like to, you know, we're... And I told Roger this, too. We're very transparent. Anyone that wants to know anything or what our plans are, it's very clear. You know, we already know the city's regulations for the lot sizes and also the style of house and how it has to lay on the lot, and it's all projected to fit just fine.
Thank you, Brent. Do any members of the board have questions for either Chris or Brent about this project? Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
To verify... So the diagram you sent, or the two diagrams, I mean, the alley actually borders no one's property. It's a... It borders 15 feet of Lexington Street, and then it also borders an unimproved alley to the east, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
And so what we're vacating does not affect anybody but the applicants.
Correct. No direct... Ms. Cornel lives to the north, Ms. Talufa, and Ms. Wyatt lives to the east.
Grounded by other alleys, but not this one.
Correct.
That's good clarification and certainly brings increased property value to all three of those properties. All right. If there are no further questions from the board, this is an ordinance, so I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to suspend a rule and move to a second reading.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Mills to suspend the rule on Council Bill 21 and advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin. And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Barnett, did you get Ms. Franklin's aye? Okay, thank you. Second reading, please.
An ordinance vacating unimproved east-west alley right-of-way extending 165 feet east of Lexington Road between Shady Lane and Chestnut Drive in Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
And a roll call.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 21 becomes Ordinance 3536. Aldermen in committee reports. Alderman Mills?
Well, if I could, just a few comments on our polar vortex special Zoom meeting. I think I, like everyone else that lives in Harrisonville, or just was sitting there in your homes during that event, wondered what this was going to cost, because when you turned the lights out at night, the furnace was running, and when you woke up in the morning, the furnace was still running. So this is going to be a legal question in the end for whenever we look at this again. But I deal with several legal... or utility bills across the country, and I don't have any resolutions on anyone except for the one in Minnesota, and it was 30-some percent up, and I just had to pay it. The one I'm most concerned about is I have a partner on an office building in Fort Worth, Texas, and that's the one I have the most concern about. But there's no... Of course, I haven't had any correspondence from the city of Harrisonville until we get our newsletter tomorrow, I think. So maybe there's things popping out of the woodwork that time hasn't taken yet. But anyway, an entertaining option four, which we talked about, it really shows our concern for the citizenry and how generous that we are in trying to help our citizens. In entertaining any percentage, though, when we talk about option one, is where my question comes in. And in supplementing the utility bills for the purpose out of the reserve fund, is that what the reserve fund is for? You know, what we really have it there for? And... Or perhaps, you know, these events, sometimes we learn from them, and then we want to get prepared in case the event happens again. Uh-oh, sorry. I'm beeping. And so, you know, moving forward, should we look at a special fund for these kind of events, whether it's prolonged heat event or another winter event, and that those purposes are already outlined, and we have ideas there. I guess the reason for that question is, is are we in a conflict of interest situation voting to subsidize our own utility bills? So that's the question for legal. Now, I don't have that problem in my home because it's one of the few in Harrisonville on Osage Valley Electric. But my business is on this situation. And we talked about... situation. And we talked about, you know, one scenario was a 25% subsidy on number one, and using the percentages on what the city's already retained, my bill will be increased by $10,000 for the event. Now, a 25% subsidy means I'm going to vote to give myself $2,500. That doesn't set real. I think I'd have to abstain from any kind of vote in that area. So just asking legal for when we come back, whether it's our home or our business, is there an issue or not treating the city? But still, even whether it's a home or a business, what's, what's the issue? And maybe that's been thought of and already addressed, but bring that back up again.
Thank you, Alderman. You made some really good points. I believe Mr. Ratliff has a comment.
I was going to say, and Alex can correct me, but my understanding that there wouldn't be a conflict because you're making a decision evenly for everybody in the city and not just yourself. You were doing it just for yourself, there's a problem.
Right.
Because you're making the decision for yourself, but you, you being affected like everybody else in the community is probably the best people to make that decision, because you're making it as a informed citizen as a whole for the citizenry. And Alex can correct me on that if I'm, I'm wrong, but my understanding of the conflict would only be is if you are selecting different groups or selecting yourself or certain demographics. But since you're evenly applying it across the citizenry, then it shouldn't be-
Well, we'll see what happens.
Alex, can you correct me? I, I hung up my law degree shingle out here behind my head, but-
Well, we'll see what happens, and I'll, I'll pledge that Harrisonville Charity gets, gets the money if-
Yeah, I can chime in just real quick. I can tell you off the top of my head that, one, I think that this merits an official memo from us. We're going to look into this. I do know that generally speaking, the conflict of interest kicks in when it's ever a $500 per, for a single transaction, or $5,000 in an entire year is going the way to a public government official voting on things. So whether or not this subsidy would count as a transaction, or it would count towards the 5,000-year total, I think that maybe a formal memo from Steve and I laying this out is appropriate here. So we'll, we'll get cracking on that tomorrow.
Thank you, Alex. Jeremy, did you have something you wanted to add to this? Okay.
Hi. I was echoing-
That's okay.
I was just going to echo some of Brad's comments that, from our research, that at least from that perspective, there would be a conflict of interest because it is being applied evenly, and especially if we use a percentage across the board. But however, that's notwithstanding Alex's comments about those types of things. So I did do a little bit of research, because the very first question was, can we give away something? So I, I think that will still be a question that would need to be answered before we can move forward with any of these plans.
Thank you. Alderman Franklin?
Yes, I, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Love the Harrisonville Square is starting up their farmer's market again this summer. They are going to have a vendor's meeting for anybody who might know of someone who does crafting. It will be Saturday, April the 24th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. And their farmer's market starts this summer. Their first one, I believe, will be June 8th. And then also in April, we have a, they are doing a walking tour. Historian David Atkinson will be conducting this. It is April 24th. It is from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. It is $10 per person, and they will start at the beginning in the front of the brick house. It's a tour. He takes you around the square, and he does a wonderful job and will probably surprise you with some of the things that he has to say. So that's all I have to say.
I'm incredibly excited that it's even time for us to start thinking about the farmer's market. You know, that means spring is coming, so how encouraging that is. Alderman Dorhoff? Okay. Alderman Zaring?
And Madam Mayor and the board, just a couple of comments there, going back to Alderman Mills' points on there. And I think we're still thinking of this money as being some special money, when it's actually the citizens' money that we're talking about basically covering expense for. And that was my understanding. That's why you have a, you know, you have a cushion of money in anything in life, is that when something like this happens, that's what you use that money for, as long as you don't deplete it to a point that you put yourself in a, in a bad situation. So I just wanted to make that point there, that, you know, it's, it's the citizens' money either way. That was my whole point before. I don't think I made that point clear when we had our meeting. But either way, it's the citizens' money. They're going to pay for it. And again, the legalities of it, I, I don't know the legalities of it. That's why we got legal people. And again, you know, I'd be willing to pay my own bill if that was some, a problem that I'm giving myself some sort of a break because, because we're doing that. But I do agree with Mr. Mills in that we need to identify. I thought that that's what that excess money was for, was for emergencies and those types of things. And I know all the briefings that we've had on that is that we're well ahead of where most communities are and where they keep their excess fund balance at. So I would, I would agree with him. I think we need to identify what, what is that money there for, and really, how much do we want to keep in there? How much should we keep in there financially? What's wise to keep in there, even when it comes to the excess money that we have there? So definitely, I think, some things there that we need to look into, into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davidson?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
Nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Yes. I, I would like to address the city and just say, I'm really pretty proud of Harrisonville right now. Those of, those of us that were at the town hall meeting on Saturday would all agree that it was a rather emotional meeting. There were a lot of feelings that were expressed. And when I went home and I thought about it, I thought, I wonder how many cities would open themselves up to a meeting like that, to be involved with the citizens and just put it out there and give everybody a chance to say what they needed to say. And so for that, I'm proud of Harrisonville. I'm not real proud of the way that, that some of our folks reacted, not because of what they thought. They have every right to think whatever it is they want to think about that. But what we all need to do is take a look or a listen to some of the, the things that we hear and see on Facebook and Twitter and all of those things, and in the coffee shops and all those things. It's very, very, very hard to be open-minded when we already have an opinion. And I think that's what we all need to do, us included, us included. We, we have our opinions about what's right and what's wrong, and we all need to open up and think about what's, what's happening on the other side. And then we need to sit back and be big boys and girls and, and do what we need to do to come to a complete conclusion. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Milner?
I just had a couple of things, too. Again, I just want to express my appreciation, and I'm sure the entire board's appreciation to staff for all of the work that they did when we got the bill for the electric last, for last month. I know it was some, a long weekend for all of them thinking about it when it came in on a Friday, and all the time and effort that they, and the collaboration that they put forward to try and figure out the best solutions for the city of Harrisonville. Just kudos to them for, for the care that they show for their fellow citizens. I don't think they get recognition enough for all the long, hard work that they do. Secondly, just, I was, I'm excited to see that we have people wanting to come to our city and build homes, especially when some of them reside here. I'll be anxious to see what their lot, what their final plan looks like and, and what their designs look like. I, I think that's exciting to know that they're ready to invest in our community. And thirdly, just to kind of touch on, on Alderman Reese, what she said, I've gotten a couple of phone calls and a couple of emails about the town hall meeting on Saturday, and this, of course, was from people who do own rental properties here in town, and they're concerned about the amount that they're going to be charged. And again, I, I wasn't able to attend that, but just from the information that I received from that meeting, from the city, it sounds like there are no defined results yet. There are no decisions made about what's going to happen, and that there plans to be a lot of discussion between the city and property owners and landlords about how to proceed on that and the best interest for everybody concerned. So again, just kudos to staff for all the hard work they do. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff?
Finalization about the renovations for the outdoor pool. We are, Grant and them are waiting on that final 3D rendering. With the South Cass Tribune to do a future addition about that outdoor pool. More information on that. Then the, we're still dealing with the, working with the county on the audit that they're going through on the CARES funds. So between all the other, the city's audit and everything else that's going on, they fit in that with the county's questions on that CARES funds as well. There is a discussion. We do not have any finalization. I've had some people ask me on this new, I think they call it Saving America, that Congress just passed. The, it will not be the same as the CARES funds that are coming out, that came out through the counties, went to the state and then to the counties. Our understanding in the initial report is that we, as a city, will be dealing directly with, with the treasury, as well as the counties will, as well as the states will. We don't have all the parameters yet on what those funds could be used for. I can tell you that a lot of those funds that we are hearing on the state level is to be more leveraged for infrastructure and those kind of projects. And so when we get that final amount, when we get those final parameters, we will be having a work session with you as a board to discuss those priorities and to discuss how we want to leverage those funds from the federal government. The Aldis store is moving forward. 95% of the structural steel framework is underway and completed. The codes department will be bringing additional changes to the municipal code to you all for, at the next, probably at the next work session on the fire code, fire inspections, utility code, building code, wind load update. So you'll be, I'm sure, happy to sit there and go through all of that with Chris. And then the Harrisonville Schools projects, all four of those projects are, have started and moving forward. And some of you have probably seen on the city's social media, the governor came by and the mayor met over there as well at the schools. And so we're excited to see the school district projects moving forward. The committee met last week. We pared down the 10 companies that had submitted for the master plan, comprehensive plan. We interviewed four of those consultant teams, and we'll be making a recommendation to you all at the next meeting on the selection of the firm for that project as well. The, as well as the Muddy Creek, which it's called, we're calling it the Muddy Creek Regional Retention Basin, with, AKA Glen Eagle Retention Basin, and the Lake Harrisonville Spillway Pipe Rehab. Staff received five RFQs, and, and engineers are under review and scheduled to be completed by the 16th, which is tomorrow. And then Cass County has agreed to allow us to have our force mains and gravity sewer pipeline within the Cass County right-of-way. So soil boring work is scheduled to begin on March 22nd. So we thank the, the county commissioners. We're working with the city on our south sewer project, and that saves us a lot of time working with the county to do, working in the right-of-way. And then city staff had notified the engineers and the contractor that the three-valve replacement is more urgent as the UV disinfection project was supposed to start August 1st. So we're going to do the valve project ahead of that because of the problems that we're having at the plant with those valves. I don't want your valves to have problems, and I'm sure Carl can give you in tenazium what those valves do and, and how they should be working. Then Wilson and Company plans to present project information to the park board on April the 13th, and then to the Board of Alderman on April the 19th for that final part of the design for Lake Luna and City Lake Projects. So that's moving forward as well. And then the street division, we redid some of our ADA out here in front of City Hall and our sidewalks and across the street here. One of our ADAs was already peeling up and causing a hazard, and so shout out to our street department for getting those fixed in an expedient manner. And with that, Madam Mayor, I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. You have the February 2021 municipal court report in your packet. And what about questions from the media? Dennis?
Yes.
Wait just a second. I think he's getting you a microphone.
We've referred to the decisions made on the utility bill, but I don't know if we've had a thorough explanation of exactly what it is. Can we get the highlights of it, please? What's going to happen to the utility bills?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, the board, after the information was passed off to them with the various options that were, we put forth as staff, asked us to work up some different scenarios and how we would, could potentially offset some of the impact to our citizens with a monetary commitment from the city, as well as how to spread those out over a period of time to the citizens. We have reached out to our rate consultant for our electric study to ask for their assistance in calculating those. I anticipate meeting with them towards the end of the week. We are, we still have to make decisions as staff as to what we're doing immediately this month on those bills that are going to go out this week. We're anticipating that those will be closer to a normal bill rate, but elevated consumption.
So a decision on how much of reserves to be used or the length of payback or anything like that? None of that's been decided yet?
No, sir. The board tasked us with developing those options and then bringing them back to the board for a final decision.
And then will the board have to vote on that? Will that be a staff decision or a board decision? Thank you. a board decision? Thank you.
Definitely be a board decision. Staff is not making that decision.
So it's been quite an unusual evening. I really appreciate the fact that the storms chose to go the other direction and that everyone remained safe. Thank you to those who are attending by Zoom, and thank you to those who have come to City Hall to attend in person. Thank you to staff. Thank you, Dennis, for coming out this evening. You know, I appreciate this board so much. It's always been, for me, it's always been about making Harrisonville a safer, stronger, and better community. And I think Alderman Reese did an excellent job of sharing her thoughts about the town hall meeting on January 6. I know Mr. Minnick was there. Alderman Dorhoff was there. Alderman Turner and Alderman Franklin were there. I was incredibly proud, as your mayor, to see the presentations that our staff made, the preparation that they did, the professionalism that they displayed in sharing with the audience why this rental-ready program is important to Harrisonville. And I, I guess I'm pleased that a lot of emotions were, were vented and shared that Saturday, because I think that clears the way for the next meeting that we have, where people will perhaps be a little more open-minded and receptive to hearing factual information. So please know that that will be coming. It's all about receiving input from the community. It's always been about feedback from the community. And as we talk about feedback, I want to just kind of dovetail something that Administrator Ratliff said about the comprehensive plan. We have interviewed several different bidders who have bid on doing the, the next comprehensive plan for Harrisonville. Mr. Crowe, Mr. Clark, Mr. Ratliff, Mr. Keydeni, and myself met and interviewed these people, and it was exciting to hear their perception of our city. So many of them had their different employees come to Harrisonville and talk to Harrisonville residents about our city. And I'm incredibly excited to be able to, once again, develop with a community input, a comprehensive plan. The city hasn't had that since 2002, and we need desperately to have a path to run on. There are exciting things happening in Harrisonville right now with people wanting to build here, with people, businesses wanting to come here. And so it's incredibly important that the city have a path to run on. But that's going to belong to the community. We want the community's input on this. So as we move forward and begin to talk about a comprehensive plan, it is my plea to community members and people who are watching this presentation this evening, to members of the board, to city staff, to be involved. You need to let us know, and these planners know, what do you want your city to look like 20 years from now? So I'm incredibly excited. I'm delighted to, to have professional people on this board who care about the city. They love the city, and they want to see the city do well. So that being said, that's all I have. I'm just grateful that we're all safe and that the tornadoes has passed us over, and I now entertain a motion for adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I thought for a minute everybody wanted to spend the night here. I have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.